The next presentation, we have a number of presenters, I think, making their way up, is related to the Next Education Workforce Update. This is not an action item for the Board. It's simply informational. I know the Board shares my priority around making sure that our educational environments are best designed to make sure we're meeting educator needs and also the needs of our students. And, you know, one of, a while ago, I had an opportunity during a professional learning experience as part of one of the organizations I belong to. We often get to see innovative things happening in other districts, and we're always looking at making sure Henrico is leading the way and being open-minded to ways to enhance the educator experience, leaning into educator autonomy, leaning into professionalism, and also ultimately enhancing the student experience and meeting student needs. So I had the opportunity to encounter some schools who were part of the Next Education Workforce in Mesa, Arizona, hearing from the educators. I think one of the teachers said, and I wish I could have recorded it with my cellphone, which I didn't have out because I was enthralled in the school visit, "I would do this job for free." Now, I don't know that I've ever heard something like that uttered, but she really had my attention. And the point being, they were really innovating different ways to provide instruction to students that were fulfilling not just to the educator, but having better results with students. And if you can do those two things at once, my interest was piqued. I brought some information back to our team, who are always looking to do that in the classroom, and thought this was something we ought to begin thinking about because certainly matched the goals related to challenges we were trying to solve. So without further ado, I will turn it over. I think Dr. Hughes is going to kick us off, and Mr. Thorpe will take the presentation from there to talk about and really just bring you up to date on what we've been doing as we've been pushing and innovating in this space. And, you know, it's too exciting not to share. So here we are.
Here we are. That's right. And please note that Mr. Thorpe followed fashion advice as well with the blue. So good afternoon, Chair Atkins, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. As Dr. Cashwell said this afternoon, Mr. Thorpe and I are happy to provide you with an update on our School Division's work with the Next Education Workforce. In this presentation, the Board will learn about what the Next Education Workforce is, the why behind the concept, and how we are beginning to implement this concept in our schools, particularly this year in two of our elementary schools. Our School Division's efforts with Next Education Workforce is intended to broaden deeper learning and personalize experiences for our students, which align to our strategic goals and objectives for learner-centered, life-ready experiences, as well as to meet the needs of our teachers. And now I'll turn it over to Scott Thorpe, one of our Directors of Elementary Education, who will share more about the Next Education Workforce.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. As you know, in RICO County Schools is a thriving community of diverse learners. However, with ongoing staffing shortages, we continue to face challenges in terms of leveraging staff time and expertise, as well as expanding life-ready learning. Not surprisingly, as School Division leaders were focusing on these topics, they also came up in meetings with the Teacher Advisory Committee as an opportunity for growth. With that critical input, we knew that we needed to think outside the box and try something new. That something new includes Next Education Workforce. The Next Education Workforce was developed by Arizona State University's Mary Lou Fulton Teachers College in response to the reality that traditional school programming doesn't work for all students, and teachers are leaving our profession. Their mission is to deliver meaningful and equitable learning outcomes, and we need to redesign the profession, the workplace, and how we prepare people for both. HCPS leaders cannot agree more. In response to the challenges, the Next Education Workforce partners with schools to better ensure deeper learning opportunities and to support teachers with focusing their work around areas of strength and interest. The School Division became affiliated with the Next Education Workforce in 2021, 2022, and in the past two years, the School Division has learned how to implement Next Education Workforce models. In 2023, 2024, select grades at Harvey Elementary School and Colonial Trail Elementary School are piloting these models. At each of these schools, there is an investment in leader and teacher expertise and experiences to drive learning, planning, and implementing of personalized learning in our schools. At the district level, we have committed to reflecting and connecting on how implementation can be supported and to championing the process at these two schools. There is no one-size-fits-all model in Next Education Workforce models. The diverse assets and needs of each school inform the thinking and implementation of each model. However, all Next Education Workforce models share several common elements, including school-based elements and team-based elements. In the select grade-level teams at Harvey and Colonial Trail, each teacher has engaged in teacher team training in the summer of 2023 in all of the elements. In the first pilot year, school leaders have empowered teacher teams with the autonomy needed to make decisions about daily schedules, learning spaces, and design learning experiences. Additionally, leaders have ensured that the school's schedules are designed so that grade-level teams share the same students at the same time. Piloting teacher teams have been provided with daily protected planning time in the school schedule, and on some days, this planning time is extended for the design of deeper learning experiences. This slide outlines the team-based elements within the Next Education Workforce. In year one, our piloting schools have leaned into the intentional grouping and regrouping of students based on students' needs and interests, with an emphasis on group assignments based on teachers' content expertise and the relationships with students. Furthermore, students are sharing multiple learning spaces within one room or multiple rooms according to learning task and need, and students are moving across these spaces throughout the school day. Let's hear from students and teachers from Harvey and Colonial Trail about how the implementation of this model has impacted their teaching and learning experience.
So who's going to work on the house? We have great educators at Colonial Trail, and we have great students at Colonial Trail and a great community that surrounds us. And even then, we noticed that our teachers were struggling with their ability to feel like they're really making an impact and getting as deep in the instruction as they would like to get. And so we started looking around, and we came across Arizona State University's Next Education Workforce.
Jayron, what did you write for your Chapter Two summary?
We have started this program where we are no longer responsible for only our classroom of 23, 24 students. We're now sharing our students with multiple teachers across our grade levels so that we aren't just responsible for, you know, those students and, you know, doing every single thing for each of those students.
Good job, friends. Have a good session, too. Okay? I'll see you soon.
Throughout the day, students rotate around to different sessions. So each of us are responsible for teaching a different content area. I teach science and social studies and writing. One of my teammates teaches math, and then another teammate teaches reading and phonics. And so the students move throughout our classrooms each day. They have about three sessions.
I specialize in like math, so I teach math three times a day. But when I teach it, it's a mix of three different homerooms. So the kids are kind of grouped strategically. So the ones that maybe need to be pushed are kind of grouped in a similar session, so I have more time to enrich that. And then kids who might need a little bit more support are typically grouped together so that when I'm teaching a lesson, I can kind of cater that same math lesson that I'm teaching, but to meet their needs in a better way.
Have a seat on the rug.
Now I have 69 students instead of just my 23. So now I get to teach all of the second grade in reading and phonics instead of just my homeroom class.
It's not scary to have to deal with that many students because we are only working with them for a certain portion of the day. So I'm teaching science and social studies. I get to focus on that one subject area and make sure that all the students that I'm responsible for are really strong in that content area. But then I don't have to worry about, oh, are they also, you know, learning the standards they need to know for math? Am I also worried about, you know, what's going on with their reading? I'm really focused on just that specific content area, and that gives me an opportunity to kind of enhance my knowledge and better my instruction for those students with that one subject.
If a kid is struggling, there's two other teachers who can say like, hey, maybe this is what I'm doing in my classroom, or like, yes, I also see that, and we can brainstorm together because they like fully know that child. And so it's kind of, you have more, but it's a shared responsibility, so it doesn't feel as overwhelming.
We talk about this a lot at Colonial Trail, but you can't really make a connection all the time with all 23 of your students. So sometimes having other adults that they get to see, that they trust, that they know, want them to be successful academically and socially, it gives them another adult to, you know, build that strong connection with.
Teachers, they, they, they teach me in different ways, and that's like unique, and that's why I like it.
So we kind of got to decide how we wanted to structure the program, how we wanted to divide the subjects, like which subjects we thought would go best together. And then we got to say, like, no one said, hey, Ms. Duncan, you need to teach math. I kind of got to say, hey, I feel pretty comfortable with the math content. I would feel good planning that. And I don't plan it by myself. There's another person on my team who they're like in their own den, so their own set of three, and we plan together. So it's still not me planning by myself. There's still someone else.
It was a lot to process at first. Just, it's a big, like, we had to just relearn so much of how to be a teacher and how to do this. So it was nerve-wracking at first, but it's turned out to be really, really beneficial for both the students and the teachers.
Zoe, you got that one correct. Can you please tell us how you know what cultivated for a scheme?
Greatest of these. Let's see what you got. Let's see what you got.
Did you escape?
Yeah. I'm telling you.
Good job.
Our school was selected as maybe being a possibility to have a pilot of Next Education Workforce. And I'm looking at what our staff, what we were doing, our community, what we're doing in innovation, thought that maybe this would be a good fit for us. Also looking at the staff retention rates that we have and looking at how can we make this model our own. So it's not the model, it's a model.
What kind of problems, Zoe?
With fourth and fifth, we're looking at our teachers, and we were seeing where were their strengths? What did they enjoy teaching? And in looking at our data, we felt we needed to revamp. So around December, we revamped, and we then went to two teacher teams. So they were then teaming. And all teachers then began teaching their own reading, and then we had other teachers that came in and taught on the other content areas. With that, we also did a whole push-in model where we had our Title I reading teacher, Title I math teachers, sped support. We had Next Education Workforce IA. All of these people, as well as interventionists, would push into the classrooms during their allotted time and help support in the instruction of our boys and girls and remediation.
So we're going to go ahead and go through and read the first time and the second time.
I think it allows you an opportunity to think beyond what we normally do day-to-day. I think that it gives you an opportunity to look at what are your teachers' strengths, to look at how your children specifically need to learn, and listening to their voices of how they want to learn, and giving them opportunities to choose.
Think through that one again.
We don't have to do other den meeting stuff, but just like as a whole groups.
Well, it's important for us to have a say and really fully understand what we want it to look like. It was important for all six second-grade teachers to be on the same page for what we wanted this to look like and how we wanted our days to flow.
Really, the planning and like the getting ready for the day piece is just so much less stressful. Not that there's like less expectation on you, but it just feels like you can kind of do your piece like to the best of your ability.
And we already know now.
It's actually been really awesome to get to learn and, you know, get to know more of the students on our grade level and gives them an opportunity to have relationships with more adults in the building as well.
It really makes the day go by easier and flow much better from a teacher perspective.
I think it's been, you know, kind of a load off of our shoulders to not have to know that we're responsible for every single subject.
I wouldn't say it's like perfect, but, you know, there's definitely less responsibilities that I feel like are always on my to-do list.
Everything's going to get taught. Everyone's, we're going to remain on pace. But we also want to hear, how can our children best learn? And giving them those opportunities to make those decisions as well.
At the division level, we have continued to support schools implementing Next Education Workforce models. We have prompted school teams to imagine how teaching and learning differently would impact students and teachers throughout the school day. And throughout this process, the focus on the why behind the shift in thinking and practice has remained the norm. Moreover, we have arranged for our piloting teachers and leaders to learn the elements of Next Education Workforce and think through what deeper learning will look like for students at their school. And this support for our piloting schools extends to prioritize the process of collectively planning lessons and units over a traditional planning product or lesson plan document. In doing so, central support staff from the Department of School Leadership, Teaching and Learning, and Professional Learning and Leadership has worked directly with piloting teacher teams at times this year. And we have also connected the teacher teams across Harvey and Colonial Trail Elementary Schools to share their process and progress with implementing these models. I'll send our central support team members visit Colonial Trail and Harvey at least monthly to monitor and support their work. And lastly, this central support team meets quarterly with the principals of Harvey Elementary and Colonial Trail Elementary Schools. And while we have almost six weeks of school remaining, we have been thinking about and planning to measure the impact of implementing Next Education Workforce models in our pilot schools. Among the ways that we aim to assess the significance of these models include levels of satisfaction with teachers and teams implementing these team-based and school-based models, alternate student measures, and rates of teacher turnover in teams implementing the models. And in terms of where we go from here, we definitely plan to offer opportunities for elementary school leaders to learn more about teaming models through the leaders and teams at Harvey and Colonial Trail Elementary Schools. And to support the expansion of Next Education Workforce models in interested schools, guide these schools with staffing challenges to utilize teaming models, and consider how these models could impact teaching and learning in our secondary schools. Thank you for this opportunity to update you about our initial implementation with Next Education Workforce, and we would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
All right. It's good seeing you, Mr. Thorpe. Hadn't seen you in a while. I will go ahead and open the floor with Mrs. Shea.
All right. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this presentation. This is really exciting. When we look at, you know, I think a couple meetings ago, I said, Henrico doesn't just do things different, we do it better. But this falls in, another thing that falls into that category about trying to think, taking a step back from how we've always done things and how for the last couple decades in, in general, elementary school nationally has been structured. Right? Take a step back and say, can we do things differently systematically? Can we change this system? Can we change the structure to do things different, to do things better? And it sounds like it's been pretty successful. It'll be interesting to see, as you said, those metrics that y'all are going to be looking at measuring in the, in the next six weeks. Some things that really jumped out to me during the presentation is the idea of sustainability. We know that the education workforce as a whole, there's not sustainability. There's more people leaving than are coming in. But just also looking at individual teacher turnover, inter-teacher, individual teacher burnout, people coming into this thinking it's a career and then deciding, maybe this was just a season of my life, I'll continue a career somewhere else. And how do we create sustainability within the teaching profession? We've done that with career ladders. We've done that with some other things. But the idea of sustainability here of looking at, you know, I heard our teachers say it was left of a lift on them, that there is less on their plates. I heard protected planning. I heard a lot about autonomy to design what they need and what their students need. And that all contributes to both work-life balance, which is important for sustainability for all of us in our careers, but also professional satisfaction, which I think is really important. And so, you know, a small, a quick little anecdote, a very seasoned third-grade teacher we have this year volunteered to move to fourth grade when there was an opening. And I was thinking, why would you do that? Right? Like, you figured it out. Like, you have this special sauce. Like, it's almost like breathing through the grades, almost as natural to you as breathing. And she said, I just felt like I was becoming stale. And I knew it was going to be more work and more of a lift to move grades, but I want to stay fresh for my students, and I want to stay growing as a teacher. And this kind of reminds me of that, right? Ways for our educators to stay fresh for themselves, but it also benefits our students. And so no specific questions for me at this time. Maybe there'll be a pop-up as my colleagues are thinking. I'm just really excited that we're looking outside the box and we're looking at ways on how do we improve teacher experience because that also can improve student outcome, you know? And as we just approved the budget, that extra investment into extended teacher planning time and those sorts of things for elementary, I think all these pieces work in tandem. And Henrico, on how to think outside the box on improving overall experience and getting creative to find solutions. So thank you. And shout out to Mr. Schatzman there.
Shout out to our Colonial Trail principal. Thanks for being here. Thanks for all your work and allowing your team to take this on and say, yeah, I'll try something new. Let's go. So you're always very enthusiastic there and great to see you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cancela.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I have a first question. What grades does this apply to? I heard some second grade, I heard fourth and fifth. What grades?
Yes. At Colonial Trail Elementary School, the piloting grade levels were grade two and grade three. And at Harvey Elementary School, the piloting grade levels are grade four and grade five.
But I do want to be clear. When I first saw this, it was in a high school, actually, not an elementary school. And there are implications pre-K through 12 about, and I think, Mrs. Shea, your comments really pointed well to what this is. It's about rethinking a system, right? So traditional models, whatever they may be at the elementary or the high school level, and really redesigning the system in ways you might not think of easily. You know, when you think about some of the structures like bell schedules or one teacher to 25 students versus the idea of leveraging staff expertise across a group of students and grouping students differently. And that's really what this work leans into. And it can be, you know, you're leaning into any number of those elements. We saw on one of the early slides, there were a lot of circles there. So it isn't one model. I think Tanya Holmes, one of the principals, said that, Harvey's principal. It's not about a model put into her school. It's about leveraging a different way of thinking, customizing it, empowering the staff voice and student voice to create a system that better meets needs. So it's certainly applicable across the board. That was a long answer to your short question, Mrs. Cancela.
Well, that's, that's interesting when I think about it at the different, at the secondary level. But if you stay around in education long enough, you realize that really nothing's really new. And even though it's reimagined, because this reminds me so much of, I have high school kids, and I'm thinking of when we used to, that's been done, at least was done at one of our elementary, an elementary school in my district, where teachers taught, it was like an English, social studies, where it was team teaching already.
And I do want to point out, this is far beyond teaming. But yeah, it is.
I don't disagree, but the concept is not new.
Yeah, no, it's not a new concept. But I think what is new is that you might have teachers, so for example, in traditional teaming, I was planning math, you were planning science, social studies. The idea of leveraging across a building or even across a grade level. And so I think what we see in our pilot is they were leaning on teaming here, but even at Harvey, they began to change in December the way that looked, who was responsible for what, who you might be planning with. You might be a fourth-grade teacher in some of these models, working alongside a third-grade teacher. You might, you know, for example, your homeroom probably switched with another homeroom in traditional models of teaming, but this might blend kids who have the same need from two different homerooms to go with a teacher at different times. So to your point, yes, I think nothing's new, but in the structural way that the school day is set up, it is quite different and quite new in that teachers are often guiding what it might look like versus a model being implemented at the division level and put down. It's teachers being able to talk about what meets their need at the school level and the grade level. So I think it builds on that.
I won't disagree with you there as far as teacher, teacher voice, which is extremely important. But I know my mom retired in 2000, and she team taught from Henrico Schools at Montevado Elementary. So I'm excited about reimagining. I think the most exciting part for me outside of the outcomes for our students is the enthusiasm of our employees. And what I keep thinking about when I listen to, in this role, I think the thing, when I look at turnover and I think about retention, it's not about the money, but yet it is about the money. It's about when folks leave and they leave education. I really try to focus in on that. And I think how can this, the exciting piece of this for me really is, how can we transform education, which is what we do, but yet make it more life balance to what you said, Mrs. Shea, right? Where teachers aren't working so much after hours, all these after-hour meetings, all of the things that this board and prior boards have heard. So the teacher voice component of this is, is very exciting to me. So now I'm going to ask, does our planning time money, the, the board is hopefully going to approve this evening, how does that play into this model? Or does it impact this model if a school does not choose it? You still benefit from the additional expanded planning time at the elementary level? Dr. Cashwell? Or team?
No, no, we were both looking to answer. Go ahead.
Thank you. So at Harvey and Colonial Trail Elementary Schools this year, they use the resources in, in their building, including the, the human resources and also the flexible thinking. And certainly as we work to expand this, our schools will be doing, will be implementing team-based models and school-based models, using the resources in their building, and certainly the additional instructional assistance would, would help with that.
Okay. So, and then the students, are they grouped in their homeroom differently? Or part of the team teaching is? Because I know I grew up listening to my mom talk about that, too. So that part really appeals to me and, and not a one-size-fits-all, fits-all classroom for students that need different levels, right? It really does help us meet needs. Can you talk to me about that?
I can. And so in terms of, every, every student has a homeroom, but yet as they are moving around the classrooms throughout the day, they might, they may not move around as a homeroom. Based on needs, based on interests, where they are within the, the unit of study, they may be flexing to rooms that relate to a chosen topic or a way that they're looking to apply their learning, whether it's a speech or whether it's a slide deck. So it's, it's, it's not one-size-fits-all. It's not every group floats around like a traditional teaming model.
And then, I guess at different schools, what would it look like in the staffing model? Is this where central office staff supports? Because we have additional resources, of course, in our opportunity schools, right? So all of the extra supports pushing in, I got that. But what does it look like, for example, at a non-opportunity school without the additional layers? Is that where central office staff comes in and supports? Help me understand that.
And first of all, we'll, we'll go back to some of the content we talked about in terms of helping to understand the, understand the why behind this, that the shift in thinking and this unlearning from our traditional one teacher, one class can really benefit the educators in the building, the educator, the educator teams, the staff as a whole. And by doing so, we, we can take care of, take care of students. And then, and then imagining what that learning could look like. And, and then based on the needs in that building, and it's not going to be the same across all buildings, but based on the needs in that building, then working with that, that admin, working with the teacher teams based on, and the leadership team, thinking about how we can implement any of these elements to help improve the student experience and the teacher experience.
So, so when I see on this slide, it says, support expansion in interested schools. So again, we've talked so much, I think the theme of today is consistency, right? That word came to mind when I saw that up on this slide, like consistency amidst building level autonomy. What does that look like in terms of, because, because I can just, immediately I start thinking about equity. What does that look like across our division when you have folks opting in or opting out? Or to, right? What is that? What are we thinking there?
Yeah, I think, you know, you certainly, you know, whenever you're looking at changing a structure or doing something new, as much as we know, this is really hitting the mark. a structure or doing something new, as much as we know, this is really hitting the mark on helping us solve for challenges, we want to make sure there's deep understanding and buy-in at the building level, right? You don't want to add a lift to educators without educators understanding it or understanding this is something new or first for our school. So, it's really important, you know, beginning this kind of deep systems change because it kind of goes far beyond the teaming. While there are familiar elements, there are some pieces, particularly when you look at some of the secondary models, that look different. School just looks different, the way you're serving students looks and feels different. That there's an opportunity to have sort of our own teams and our own schools begin to do the work, learn what it's like, and then share that with others. So, while we begin at the elementary, we'll begin looking at the middle and high school level and gaining interest from our building leaders and teachers who might be interested in trying this, and then letting it spread from there. And so, you know, the pilot schools have gained a lot this year and the two principals will really serve as leaders, along with Mr. Thorpe and the other elementary directors, which is tremendous, and their own learning community with their colleagues to talk about what worked well. I've already been in buildings this school year, this is how fast this spreads. And while they're not pilot schools, I can count four or five elementary schools who tell me, ah, we were hearing about this work all year and we've already done X or we've done Y. I've got teachers who are rethinking the way they plan, who are rethinking the way they serve kids. So, it's allowing, I think, freedom for autonomy to your point, and that is a balance, Mrs. Cancela, right? We want to make sure the standard of instruction is high for our students, we're meeting the standards and goals, and that we're supporting our educators, but that we're, we're looking at things differently in service of that. And these are two schools who dug deep to look at it differently and then are sharing that learning. And the more schools begin to implement various parts and pieces of this, that will just continue that learning across our schools so that our teachers feel empowered to innovate and, and approach the challenge differently in service of their students.
Well, I appreciate you just mentioning the pieces and parts, right? You may not have to jump, jump in on the entire concept immediately, but the pieces and parts. And this is something that I think just you and your team have done and the board and prior board has done a great job in terms of listening. I know a lot of times, we, board members, we can't respond, you know, a public comment to everyone appropriately or written comment, right? But this is truly listening. It is listening. It's like, this needs, education needs to, with what we do for our students, it needs to transform with where we are now as to staffing, as to joy, right? I mean, employees and how they feel matter. So, I'm just super excited about this because I've been, every time, through so many conversations with Dr. Cashwell, I'm constantly thinking, so many of our employees, or maybe not so many, but some that have left us or just have shared feedback, say, private sector, private sector. Well, education, of course, is public sector, but how can we make, you know, the work-life balance better for, for all of our employees? And this is really checking a lot of boxes as stated by actual employees that participated in it. So, thank you for the study. I look forward to how this will expand and evolve. I think it's going to be a game-changer. Thank you so much. Chair Atkins.
Mr. Young.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Couple questions, couple comments. I love that it's innovative. I love that we are reimagining the classroom. So, one of my questions, I guess a bunch of them were just answered with the second and third and then fourth and fifth. But my, I guess my initial question is, what are we hoping to gain out of this? Like, what is the end result that you two are looking for at the end of this school year when we start getting that feedback?
Well, I think first and foremost, as many of your colleagues have said, we're looking for teacher and student satisfaction, right? When you think back to our challenge and really trying to recruit and retain our teachers, we want to make sure that we're providing a workplace for them where they feel that joy and they want to come to work every day and they have a purpose. And I think we've seen that so far, although we have data collected in some small ways, but not large scale yet. But I think we really want to see the impact for our deeper learning, our personalized learning. We want to make sure that our students' individual needs are being met. And then, we want to make sure that we're in service of our teachers that we know are working hard for us.
And I would add, and then scale that up across other schools, right? And learn where are we hitting the mark in this? Where can we dig a little deeper? And then, share that and scale that across our schools so that all can benefit from an innovative approach.
Yeah. And I love the collaboration, especially amongst teachers. I understand our kids' anxiety when they are getting ready to get the new teacher for the next year and knowing that you have all teachers now. So, we are eliminating that, that sort of barrier there of knowing who's going to be your teacher. But I just would like to employ us, that I love the fact that we're paddling these programs. I would have loved it more if we would have seen this at our opportunity schools and our schools that are accredited with conditions. I just think that such a positive program could go immediately into those schools and sort of help out. But all of my colleagues have already echoed all my questions. I think it's amazing what we're doing, reimagining the classroom. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irving.
Thank you both for the presentation. And I want to couch all of my questions in the fact that I like this and I think that this is great. So, they're all, should be taken through that lens. The first question is, how are the schools chosen?
Well, we were, we were very intentional, as we said during the presentation. Henrico County, diverse, diverse county, a lot of diverse needs, a lot of amazing strengths. It's a very big, big county. We were very intentional to choose two schools that were really different from each other and also had leaders that were very interested and had, and had risk-tolerant cultures. And Harvey and Colonial Trail were amongst those schools.
Makes perfect sense to me. What are the costs of partnering with Arizona State University on this?
There's no ongoing cost to participate in this. And a lot of the work that we've done with other school divisions, of course, has been free. Some of the professional development that we engaged in at the beginning to really make sure that we were up to speed, came with a small cost that we were able to pay for, but out of our professional learning funds. But overall, zero.
Okay. And I, I'm glad that Ms. Cancela asked the question because I was thinking to myself, and I didn't want to be too reductive, but I was like, this sounds an awful lot like middle school to me. And not that that's a bad thing at all, and I want to say, again, my, my comments are couched in that I like this and I think this is a good thing. But it did sound like that. But it happened, the clarification on how it's different in different ways is useful and makes that seem like maybe this is something that also could trickle up levels as well. My last question is more philosophical. What if, when we get the results back, there is no impact on students? But we find that it, you know, marginally helps retain teachers? Would we want to continue to do this? Because I, you know, education is very difficult from a data perspective where things are so, we want to quantify everything in this world, but so many things, like the usefulness of things can't always be quantified in numbers. And I think that I'm just interested from a philosophical level, if we just do this and the kids are in the exact same place, but maybe, you know, it marginally helps retain staff and makes them at least feel more valued. I'm, I'm just curious, what would be the future intent of it?
I think we would continue digging, digging through data, including, including measurable data, whether it's attendance data, behavior data at the elementary level, progress and diagnostic results in reading and math. But also, I think we would really need to work hard to measure some of these life-ready components and, and the six Cs and the students' demonstrations of the six Cs throughout the units of study with our, with our piloting schools. We would really want to be, go through that data very carefully to make certain whether it's making an impact or not. And then, if it isn't, we'd really have to go back and ask why. And that would inform our next steps of implementation and expansion.
Yes. Because I think that a thing can be good in and of itself without having to produce some sort of outcome. And I think maybe the effects of this wouldn't even be known until later on because maybe it has knock-on effects where this type of process of learning makes you better prepared for middle and high school where it is more differentiated. And we can't even know this for years. And so, I think it's important to keep these things in context and not just remove something just because it doesn't immediately, you know, bear fruit.
Absolutely. And I do want to point out, and of course, we kept the presentation at a high level, but I think there's some more information I can share with the full board that'll, I think, help you see the bigger picture here in regards to what it can be as far as a K-12 shift in, in systems thinking. But I mean, to your point, and one of the reasons, you know, ASU is a research-backed university doing this, there's been years of research on teacher prep programs and implementation in school systems before they started sharing that this is something effective. So, I think there is research that supports this effort. And then, nationally, organizations, you know, the AASA and others are saying, oh, hey, here's something that, you know, we're seeing strong results from. So, I mean, that's a, that's a starting point. To your point, you know, when I think of the challenge Mr. Thorpe laid out on the early slide, like, expanding deeper learning experience for students and meeting the needs of our teachers and staff, those are really the outcomes we want to measure first and foremost. We certainly want to, wouldn't want to see negative impacts like student achievement going down drastically or teacher retention rates trending the wrong way. I think absent those two things, we're really looking to answer the, the challenge at hand and, you know, that specifically, a lot of that is anecdotal and it's qualitative data points, not necessarily student achievement points. And I think we heard some of the testimonials just from our first year, that support we're trending in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. I only have a few suggestions and one question. Mr. Irving, I was really aligned with trying to understand the selection process. And you responded to that question and in your response, one of them was around risk-tolerant cultures. Can you talk a little bit more about that to ensure for the public and anyone else we understand what that means?
We, we have many schools that are, that embrace change quickly. And so, let me say that differently, Chair Atkins. Colonial Trail and Harvey embraced, embraced change quickly. And those were, that's one of the reasons why those two schools were selected, one of the reasons.
But there's nothing holding back others from joining in. I want to make that clear. We, we also did not want to force upon schools who may have been managing a number of other efforts or change or staffing challenges. And staffing challenges really being one, speaking to your opportunity schools piece, you know, if you're still trying to get a team of fourth grade teachers and you may have some vacancies, it'd be a hard thing to pull off. So, as we're stabilizing those schools and then looking at some of these models, I think complement them really well. But there's nothing, you know, to say that moving forward, that we're limiting the participation. But, you know, we certainly didn't want to force it upon schools who weren't ready, willing, and interested.
I think those, those schools too have such a culture of allowing their teacher's voice. And so, they, you know, didn't lock their teachers in, they asked their teachers along the way, is this working? What do we need to do? Is this working? What do we need to do? So, that teacher voice was incredible. And I think you just can't speak enough about that in both of the schools that are in the pilot this year. But to Mr. Thorpe's point, we have all schools that are probably poised and ready to jump in now that they've heard about.
And I did ask that question because sometimes in the selection process, it's not easily identified what's a good candidate. And when you try to measure culture or empowerment or embracing change, there are three areas that I think in school divisions that probably aren't measured enough to even understand it. And so, it's organic. You either know the culture of the school, you can explain it, but it's not documented often in black and white. So, I just wanted to give both of you an opportunity to elaborate on that. I do think this particular initiative is a great opportunity to do that. The selection process, I would imagine there was a significant portion of this because of those two things.
Yes.
And because we know that, this might be a great time to memorialize those learnings in the space of culture.
Yes.
And embracement. I don't prefer saying risk tolerant, but I'll just say embracing change. So, that's just something for you to consider because you have a wonderful opportunity to document it and show others what it looks like measured. The other question I have is, what is the timeframe in which y'all have the results from your assessments?
As soon as our school year is completed, we'll, we'll take a look at some of the measures that we're looking to use to assess effectiveness, whether it's teacher, teacher turnover, alternate student, student measures, teacher satisfaction. We expect that to be June, July.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of have a tickler for sort of checking in on it. And then, the last part, which is interesting, as you are doing your assessments, I'm curious on what a new teacher would feel about this process. So, perhaps that's something that you can put into your research to really take that, segment that out purposefully to understand their perception.
Yes. And I believe, although I would have to confirm with Mr. Thorpe, I think one of the teachers at Colonial Trail is a newer teacher. When we were able to go out and talk, she talked about that experience of being newer and learning in a different way and how that really helped her by planning and collaborating with her grade levels so, you know, much and really getting to know students in different strategies. So, she gave us good kudos.
I would imagine as a new teacher, it's a fantastic way to become seasoned.
Yes.
Because you're organically paired with a mentor.
Right.
I mean, however you want to say it. But as a new teacher, you are authentically paired, not just forced, because you have all these things in common with your planning time, your curriculum, the way in which you teach. And so, I'm just very curious, but I tend to agree for a new teacher, this would be amazing and I think it's something to watch. Unless there are other comments, we're going to move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to keeping you posted on, really, I will say, just the leaning into innovative models and structures to better support our staff and students. We're grateful for the two teams who have participated this year, the way they're sharing that learning across the school system and...